You make the motion. Okay, thank you. Where's Taylor though?
Uh, why don't you go get him?
Alright, are we ready?
On your left.
Okay, council, everybody sit down so we can see who we all have here. We have people on Zoom. Yeah, cuz they can see you.
Four on one.
Yes, councilwoman.
Yeah, before we get started, I'd like to yield the floor to an elder from my Rockbomni district.
Okay.
Member, Bonnie Holyrock.
Okay, Ms. Holyrock, you can come and speak right here. Because, and I appreciate that you've been here all day, and we all would like to hear from you, and thank you for being here. But I am going to limit your comments to about three minutes, okay?
Okay, if we need to within that time.
Okay.
I came here today out of concern with what's been going on. And I'd like to start out, not by retelling the story, but by reminding all of us, those of us who are Lakota in this room, should have grown up with the story of the white buffalo woman who brought the sacred pipe to our people, and taught the story of how we should treat one another, and especially how women should be treated. There were two men who approached her, one with good intentions and good thoughts, and one not. And I think all of you know the story of what happened with the one who did not treat her well, or had bad intentions toward her. That was a lesson in how women in our tribe should be treated. And I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder to everybody here. It was ironic today that it's a day set aside for remembering murdered and missing Indigenous women, and yet today is the day where the discussion has focused on two young women who brought and filed complaints against a member of your group. The MMIW group deals with violence against women, whether it's physical, whether it's verbal, however, but there are missing and murdered women of our nation and of other tribal nations due to violence. And it's good for every one of us to remember that we all came from mothers, that we have sisters, that we have daughters, that we have granddaughters, that we have aunties, all women. And we need to remember the teachings of the sacred pipe and how to treat women. I want you to think about the two women who were here today, and talk to you about their concerns and their hurt. And I'd like for you to think about their faces, and impose the faces of your mother, or your daughters, or your granddaughters, or your aunties, or your grandmothers on the faces of those two women who were here today. Mike, I know you have a wife, I know you have daughters. Sonia, I know you have daughters. Tyler, you have a mom. Kevin, you have a wife. Stacy, you have sisters. Richard has a wife and a daughter. All of you have women in your lives that you value. Think about how you would feel. Would you stand idly and quietly by if your mother, or your wife, or your daughters were treated in this way? Think about that. Put yourself in that place. Put your loved ones on the faces of those two women who were here today. There seems to be a pattern here. This is not the first time this has happened. So there's a pattern. It's not just an accident. It's not just something random. It's a pattern of behavior. And it's important that you do what you can to stop that, cuz I don't think you would like your mother treated in that way, or your sisters, or your daughters. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. I did want to come and talk to you before you take your vote, and ask that when you vote, that you stand up and not do a secret ballot vote, but that you do a roll call vote, so we can all hear, not just in this room, but across our reservation, people who are listening to the radio, we can all hear how you voted. There's something that I wanted to share with you. And it's a statement that stuck with me for some time now, and it was at Trump's first impeachment hearing. There was a man by the name of George Kent, who was a deputy secretary of state, and he testified. And at the end of his testimony, he said, "You can't promote principled anti-corruption action without pissing off corrupt people." And I want to leave that statement with you, so we can all hear how you vote, and find out who is corrupt and who is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dreamer?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to impeach on both of them, on both complainants, so Ms. Spotted Bear and Ms. Whiteface.
Second.
Second.
Do you wanna call a vote? His motion was to impeach on both complaints. So we can, let's vote separately. Even though the motion is for both of them, we're gonna vote to impeach on each separate one. I think that that's best procedurally. So the motion is for both of them, but we'll run the vote separately. Okay? First one will be based on Ms. Whiteface's complaint. Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Abstained.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
No.
Okay. Okay. So now we'll run, that didn't, that failed, it did not meet the two-thirds necessary. Now we'll run the vote on Councilman Dreamer's motion for impeachment on Ms. Spotted Bear's complaint. Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
No.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
Sonia, can you remove your mask? We can hear you.
Yeah, no.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
No.
That motion fails as well. Do I have any other motions? Yes, Councilman Carlo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the following motion. I'd like to find the complaint against my Ms. Whiteface substantiated, and I'd like to impose the following sanctions. A public apology, complete an anger management course, and 100 hours of community service with the day labor. Motion.
Yes, councilman.
That's for the first complaint, right?
That was his motion, yes.
For the first.
For the first complaint, Ms. Whiteface.
Is that the question of timeline as well, is completing with, okay?
Yes. Sorry, I lost track. Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha, yes.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, four no.
Motion passes by. Do you have any other motions?
Thank you, Your Honor. My second motion is to find the complaint substantiated by Ms. Spotted Bear with the following sanctions imposed. Public apology, complete an anger management course, 100 hours of community service of the day labors, and under a 90-day timeframe.
I have a motion and a second. Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yeah.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Motion passes. I want to thank all of you for inviting me here to preside over this hearing. I appreciate all your hard work that you did today, and your grace when I was trying to make decisions. I'm new to this as well, and I I'm honored to be here, and I really think that you guys made a very careful and thought-out decision. It wasn't easy, and I commend you for all working together and coming to a decision for one of your peers. And so, thank you, thank you. And I'll turn the meeting back over to President.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly, I appreciate it. Thank you for all your support today, and definitely, you know, as much needed. And, you know, again, we look forward to, well, we don't look forward to, hopefully, we'll see in a better circumstance, you know, so you don't wanna come back, so. So, but again, you know, thank you so much for your professionalism today, and I really appreciate it. So, council, I don't know if anyone has anything to say. Councilman Carlo, go ahead.
Your Honor, it's been a pleasure today, and I hope I never see you in this circle again. And I ask everyone to behave. Moving forward, Ms. Chairman, I have a two-thirds item, and I'd like my assistant to read it.
Um, yeah, Councilman, go ahead, Councilman Yellowboy.
I too would like to thank Your Honor for being here today, along with my colleague down there. I hope we don't see you anytime soon, but if we do, then we'll be looking forward to having you back. So, thank you for your time. Safe travels to your volleyball game, and have a good evening.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Dolly, I appreciate it. Okay, cool. So just, we'll give a couple seconds, we're gonna switch places here, so. But, yeah, so I think the Vice President's gonna come up and do the presentation on the motion, and then, and then we'll do it. So, councilmen, is there a motion to, I know there's a two-thirds, you want a motion to, to?
I'd like her to read the resolute, or that ordinance, right?
That's fine. Okay, go ahead.
Then I'll make the motion to approve.
So ordinance of the Ogleosue Tribal Council, the Ogleosue Tribe and unincorporated tribe, ordinance of the Ogleosue Tribal Council, the Ogleosue Tribe amending ordinance number 2018 as amended by 2029 and 2034 by incorporating the OSD code in 1910 risk level charter. risk level chart to determine when a shelter in place shall be in effect. Whereas the Oglelsoo Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one twenty-three. By adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglelsoo Tribal Council is governing body of the tribe. And whereas article four, section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe. Adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pineridge Indian Reservation. And adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglelsoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribal council adopted resolution twenty seventy affirming President Barronage's declaration of a state of emergency on the Pineridge Indian Reservation due to the novel coronavirus named SARS-CoV-2 and the disease it causes, the coronavirus disease twenty nineteen or COVID-nineteen. And whereas the tribal council recognizes that Indian tribes and reservations are among the most vulnerable populations and locations for this COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas in light of the extraordinary threat posed by the COVID-nineteen, the Oglelsoo Tribe must take extraordinary measures to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. And whereas ordinance number twenty seventeen amend the OST Emergency Response Manual to include the Public Health Emergency Response Infectious Disease Response Plan with appendices as a working document. And whereas OST COVID-nineteen Response Team added a risk level chart that indicates the risk level for the community transmission of SARS-CoV-2 virus with recommended actions for each level. And whereas the highest risk level is a red level and recommends to shelter in place and the lower levels do not. And whereas the change in risk level is variable depending on the spread of the virus within our communities where there remains the potential for a severe outbreak. And whereas OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the proposed amendment and recommends approval by the tribal council. And whereas the tribal council has determined that it is in the best interest of the health and welfare of the Oglelsoo Tribe and the Oglelsoo Lakota Oyate to amend the shelter in place health order to allow the shelter in place health order to correlate with the red level on the risk level chart to be in effect only when in the red level. Now therefore be ordained that the Oglelsoo Tribal Council does hereby amend section thirteen of the ordinance number twenty eighteen as amended by twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty-four as follows. Amended additions in bold and underline. Section thirteen, effective date. This order shall become effective at twelve oh one AM on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And will continue to be in effect only during the time periods when the OST COVID-nineteen risk level chart update is in the red level or until it is rescinded by tribal council action. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall supersede repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Oglelsoo Tribe and certification.
Motion made, second by Councilman Canoyer. Uh, Councilman Canoyer, go ahead.
Dr. Musa, were you crying?
No, I was trying to breathe in my mask, sorry.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this, Counsel?
Can she just kind of put it in layman's terms for the people listening?
Sure, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, thank you for that clarification. So we are using a risk level chart, so you will see on our Facebook and we're looking at different ways to get that risk level out. Because we do it on a weekly basis and it's based on positivity rates and hospitalizations and a couple other things that will impact our ability to respond if there's a high positivity rate. So if our numbers start going up. Our people have been doing a really good job of getting vaccinated, wearing our masks, washing our hands, and social distancing. So our numbers have gone down dramatically. So we're currently in the yellow level and you guys will see these in different cities and municipalities where they're using this type of level so that people can move different and do different things. And so we've been in the shelter in place, but if we are using this risk level chart, then we will only utilize the shelter in place when we're in the red, when our risk is higher. Does that clarify enough? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, if you could, friends, all, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Oh, what was the motion?
To, to. To approve the ordinance regarding the risk level chart to determine when the shelter in place shall be in effect.
Thank you all, yes.
David Poyer.
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Secretary. The vote was eighteen forty against, Councilman Poyer.
Chair, I'd like to entertain a motion that no retaliation be given on the two ladies that filed a complaint.
Okay, motion made, second by Councilman Watkins for no retaliation on the two women that brought the complaints. Uh, any, uh, Councilman Yellowboy?
So if Mr., if Council Representative Poyer can add in the third lady. The two that filed the complaint and the other individual who works there. All three of them? Okay.
Okay, so that's been amended to include all three, so for any kind of retaliation, so. Any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none online or in person, Secretary, we could run that vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel that passes eighteen forty against, Councilwoman Carlo.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to remind you and also let the council know. Know you and I have had several discussions in regards to honoring for Mr. Teton. And maybe you could get with his mother and see when would be a good time to do that. I know I've had the evil Facebook. And a lot of people were messaging me on Facebook in regards to that, so. You know, just letting them know that it is in the works, so if we could get with his mother to see when would be a good time, when, or even him, when he will be around.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Counsel, we're gonna do it today, but he had to go to rookie mini camp, I think, in New York. So, so he's actually in New York right now. He was on the plane this morning, but otherwise he would have been here. So, but I know that we could do it in committee too. So I'm not sure if committee, and they said next Monday or Tuesday might work, so I don't know if the committee wants to volunteer to to honor him next Monday or Tuesday. Is there? Land? Okay, land, okay, so let's do it in land. And then, um, on next Monday, so we'll do that. And I'll let the family know, so, and we'll get that set up, so. Okay, okay, now, Councilman Yellowboy, go ahead.
So, um, you want to take it up, or? Me or you?
I'll take it. Chairman, I need to make a motion to get the Chief of Police to work immediately. I talked to the HR. Council keeps asking about, been about three weeks now since they made that decision, some face along the line, someone playing games. I'm not blaming HR or anything, but they're going by DOI to wait for their paperwork, which can take forever when they decide, so I want to make a motion to get them to work immediately. That'll be my motion.
Okay, so motion made, seconded by Councilman DeBrey and Councilman Carlo.
Chair, I think we can open the agenda to add it, am I right?
Yeah, you're right.
Motion to open the agenda.
Motion is to open the agenda.
Okay, so. There's a motion to open the agenda, seconded by Councilman Rodriguez, to open the agenda, that is a two-thirds vote. So we kind of jumped the gun there, so. I know, so.
I know.
Okay, so we'll do the vote to open the agenda. Go ahead, Secretary, if you want to call a vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Gerald Canoyer Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Okay, Counsel, that passes fifteen yes, two no, and one not voting. Councilman Watkins. The agenda's open, so.
Motion. Motion to put the Chief of Police on immediately.
Okay, okay, seconded by Councilman DeBrey and Councilman Rodriguez.
I'm, I'm re chair.
Okay, okay, we'll get you, Counselman. Okay, go ahead, Councilman, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle, so go ahead.
So Chair, you know, this is kind of the same thing. We have to let the process play out on the hiring. I mean, you know, we got ourselves into a mess on about three positions by not letting that process play out with him with them background checks and all that. And I'm not saying the newly selected Chief of Police has anything on him. I'm just saying, is there, who's acting right now? Do we have someone acting? I mean, I just, I just feel we should let that process play out instead of jumping right into it. I mean, do we learn from our past mistakes or do we just keep making them?
Is there anybody who wants to answer that question, Counsel?
Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, as far as I know, everything's been cleared, but there's like a window that you have to wait to take place. So, that's where that ten day or twenty day window. I think he's cleared all the background.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Yellowboy.
So when I spoke with Ms. the HR lady. Michelle. Um. Been a long day. When I spoke with Michelle this afternoon, it was just waiting on the adjudication process, so. That's all they're waiting for.
Uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle. Okay. That was, oh, you were, okay, thank you, Counselman. Further discussion on this? Okay, oh, oh. The second, yeah, the second was made by Councilman DeBrey and Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, any discussion, hearing none, Secretary, if you do the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle.
No.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Not voting.
Okay, so the motion passes, fifteen yes, two no, one not voting, thank you. There's a motion adjourned by Councilman Carlo. Seconded by Councilwoman Carlo. Any discussion on that, Counsel? Uh, hearing.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, I was just making sure that since that passed, if we can get that notice to him right away, so he can start, you know, like tomorrow or Friday or something. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the secretary's office can get that out. We can get it signed and stuff tomorrow, so. Thank you. So, uh, so, motion on, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, Secretary, we could call a vote to adjourn.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon. Seventeen, one no, no.
Okay, Counsel, that motion passes, seventeen yes, one not voting. Thank you, Counsel, drive safe. Audience, continue to mask up, sanitize, get a vaccine if you believe that. Keep our rates down. And again, thank you Kiwi Radio, thank you Perryland Casino. Thank you, Secretary staff, for being here. Thank you, security. Thank you, OST Police Department. Appreciate all of you, stay safe, and we'll talk soon. Thank you, our Oyate.